Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Wright.
Ms. Henderson will not be in attendance tonight due to out-of-town travel and as Superintendent Ryswick announced at the work session, Knox County Schools will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th in honor of the Juneteenth holiday. Our next Policy Review meeting is scheduled for June 28th at 9:00 a.m. in the Summer Place Community Room. Also want to remind everyone that in keeping with tradition, our July Board meetings will be held the second week of July due to the July 4th holiday. A work session is scheduled for July 8th and then the regular session on Thursday, July 11th. Both meetings will start at 5:00 o'clock our normal time. We thank all of you for being in attendance tonight. We would ask you be respectful and courteous at all times to everyone who is speaking and if you need to speak to a neighbor, take a phone call, anything like that, please step out of the room to do so. Board members, you received an email this morning. I just wanted to announce publicly, due to time sensitivity for the project, Dr. Ryswick and I approved the addition of Agenda Item 6C19 regarding an outdoor learning space project at West High School. The KCS Facilities Department has reviewed and approved the project and the Finance Department has verified that the funding from the West High School Foundation is in the school's internal accounts. We can certainly have discussion, answer any questions you may have when we are considering the consent agenda items. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Horn, I think we have somebody that we would like to recognize and celebrate today.
We certainly do. Thank you, Mr. Triplet. I had the pleasure of being on the committee that chose our student representative for this school year and so I have the honor of honoring Ms. Celeste Erdel this evening. And since this is her last board meeting, we wanted just to recognize her and thank her for her diligence in attending our board meetings and bringing us the student perspective and representing the student body and keeping KCS students informed. Celeste graduated from Bearden High School on May 23rd with a 4.42 weighted GPA and her ACT super score was 34. Very impressive, very impressive. In addition to serving as our board student representative, Celeste played school and club volleyball and served as the captain of the Bearden varsity volleyball team during her junior and senior year. She served as Senior Class Secretary of Bearden's Student Government Association and as co-chair of their Teacher Appreciation Committee and as a member of their Marketing Committee. Celeste served on Bearden's Senior Committee. She participated in Bearden's Dog-a-Thon, a school club raising money for East Tennessee Children's Hospital where she was selected to be on the Treasury Committee, Marketing Committee, and Fundraising Committee. She served as the Bearden Key Club Social Media Manager and Historian and was selected by the Bearden High School faculty to serve on the school's Prom Committee. She also tutored students in math and English. She worked as a concession stand manager, babysitter, and house sitter. She collected and organized, donated Christmas trees for the Fantasy of Trees annual event and she volunteered at Boo for the Zoo. Boo at the Zoo, excuse me. She packaged and distributed food bundles for families in need at Faith Lutheran Food Pantry and served as a middle school volleyball coach. Celeste attended the 2023 Governor's School for the Humanities. She was a member of the National Honor Society her junior and senior years. She was a member of the National Junior Honor Society for her freshman and sophomore years. And she earned the Leadership III Award, a Biology Award, a National Latin Exam Silver Award, and she was awarded the Top Dog Award chosen by the teachers of Bearden High School. Quite an honor. Every year, we all agree how hard it is to say goodbye to our student representative and this is certainly no exception. Celeste, we will miss having you on this board. You've done a wonderful job representing your colleagues, your fellow students, and we're so proud of you and all these wonderful accomplishments and we will be so excited just to see what the future brings for you and we hope you'll stay in touch with this board so that we can continue to cheer you on every step of the way. Thank you. And I have a little thing for you, so we'll go take a picture.
Also like to thank her parents for being here tonight and I'm glad y'all were able to make and enjoy and watch and be a part and allow us to have your daughter these evenings. So we thank you for that. Just a reminder, the Board of Education's had detailed discussions on all these agenda items on June 3rd in our work session a couple of days ago. And Ms. Copey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 6, Consent Agenda.
We have a motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, and we have some discussion. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So Item C7 is a data sharing agreement with Olive Tree Early Learning Academy. I just want to make the board, want to make it known to the board that I'm the President of Olive Tree Early Learning Academy, the intent of that data sharing agreement so that way we can understand the impacts of high-quality early education as kids move through the K-12 system. So because of that, I won't be voting on it, I'll be passing but would ask for a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Sir Chair there. I, on 19, under Consent Agenda, which, which you had announced earlier was the West High School addition to, for construction, I just wanted to let the board know that I have, that that contract had some issues as far as, as legal form for the board. I have, I've made those changes. It will now be up to the contractor to accept those changes should the board approve the contract. I just want to let you know that that's what's going on here. Obviously, I only saw this contract this afternoon, but, but so I wanted to let you all know.
So we are approving your contract, the one you have reviewed and changed?
That's correct.
And so they will have to just accept what you've changed?
Yeah.
And if not, we'll have to come back, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Pretty good. Ms. Owen?
Thank you. Do we need to pull those two items from the agenda and do them separately? I mean, from the consent agenda?
I can say as far as the item I'm talking about, it's fine on consent, but once you approve it on consent, it will be with those changes.
Okay. For the roll call vote, do we need to remove that one for, or do we need to roll call the consent?
We can pull it. Okay. So we need to amend that motion to the consent agenda minus Olive Tree, correct?
Okay, so I offer an amended motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item Number 7, the Olive Tree Early Learning Academy.
We'll just do it next. We'll just do it next. So a motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Bike or Ms. Christie. And all in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. So then we'll do Item C7.
Approve data sharing agreement with Olive Tree Ernie Learning Academy for a one-year term.
Motion by Mr. Butler, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All right, and full to roll call vote with that.
Yes. Dr. Butler? Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? That's seven yes votes and one pass.
Motion carries.
Item 7A, Discussion and Possible Action on Knox County Board of Education Policies I-211, Selection of Instructional Materials Other Than Textbooks, and I-212, Reconsideration of Instructional Materials and Textbooks.
We have to approve the updated policy I-211 only.
I'll second that. Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. I know we have some discussion, we also have some public forum, so we're going to do public forum first and then on this topic and then we'll get to the discussion. Susan, and I, pardon me if I don't, I can't read the last names all the way through, but Susan Gronke? Susan, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Susan Gronke, Sevier County. I've stood in front of the board before and as many of you know, I've-
Excuse me, just one second.
Sure.
Apologize. To, to have somebody that's outside of Knox County speak, we do need to approve that. Is that correct? Any discussion on that? Or, we do need a motion. We have a motion, we have a second, we have a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Bike. Any discussion? We typically have allowed teachers to speak that are from Knox County. I don't know how often we've had somebody from outside Knox County speak. Do we need to do roll call or all in favor? All in favor say aye? Apologize for that, you can carry on.
All right, thank you. I've been training, beginning middle school and high school English teachers at the University of Tennessee for over 20 years. My husband's a middle school science teacher at Whittle Springs Middle, has been in the classroom for over 20 years. I just wanted to say tonight that one of the arguments that we continue to hear from would-be book banners is that books that contain descriptions or depictions of sexual content are dangerous and harmful to young people. But research actually supports that such books can be safe ways for young people to explore topics that they can't or won't discuss with parents or guardians or other adults in their lives. Research supports that reading such books actually prevents young people from engaging in risky sexual behaviors. As a young girl, I was woefully naive about my own body and sexual health. My father was never around, we worked long hours, and my mother was an addict, lost in the throes of her own addiction. Thank goodness for Judy Blume and her book, Are You There God? It's Me, Margaret, that taught me at the age of 12 what it meant to have a period. That was not a conversation I could have had with any of the adults in my life. And thank goodness for Judy Blume's book Forever about two high school seniors who fall in love and have consensual sex. Judy Blume has said that she actually wrote that book for her daughter, who wanted to read a book where teens have sex and actually don't die from it. I learned about the importance of consent from that book and about safe ways to protect myself from getting pregnant and from sexually transmitted diseases. Again, conversations about any of these topics were not ones that I could have safely with any of the adults in my life. These books were a lifeline for me, as they are for many young people today. I would just ask the board to please trust teens. Trust teens with books that contain sexual contact, trust that they need them, and trust that they can make decisions about what's appropriate for them and what's not and what's too mature for them and what's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Dana Hofseth? If you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Dana Hofseth, Knox County. Currently sitting on Knox County School Library shelves are books that are written for teens and pre-teens, which present sexual experimentation and gender identity exploration as a healthy and normal part of growing up. Ardent defenders of these materials claim they are necessary accommodation to a changing culture. We even heard in the April meeting that they improve student reading scores. Seriously. That study, whatever it said, was clearly misapplied. In opposition to these materials are those who recognize that sexual experimentation and exploration is just sanitized wording for promiscuity and high-risk sexual behaviors and therefore have no place in the school libraries. They are accessible elsewhere, but in our school libraries, they shouldn't be. Which position will hold sway? What is the resolution to this ongoing controversy? It shouldn't be that complicated. The solution is found in the current laws of Tennessee. Tennessee Code Title 49, which deals specifically with education, Chapter 6, deals specifically with elementary and secondary education. Part 13, specifically 1304, indicates sex education must, quote, "emphatically promote only sexual risk avoidance through abstinence," end quote. It goes on to say that instruction of the curriculum shall not, quote, "promote implicitly or explicitly any gateway sexual activity or health message that encourages students to experiment with sexual activity," end quote. That includes, quote, "providing or distributing materials on school grounds that condone, encourage, or promote student sexual activity." Can it be more clear? I'm not a lawyer, but I can read. The books being challenged are not compliant with Tennessee law. We don't need a hand-selected committee to arbitrate each book. You've seen the pictures. You've seen the content, or you certainly should have by now. What possible justification? Our schools are out of compliance, our librarians are out of compliance, and we need school board members to draw definitive lines based upon the will of the people, based upon the code of the law. The only reason you've been inundated by outraged parents is that so few are aware of the depth of the perspicacity of the vulgar materials available to their children. When informed, they simply can't believe it's that bad or that adults would purposely put these things before our children or young adults. But it is that bad and you've seen it. And there are adults who advocate for these things. Even if there was no law, it's outrageous. So the question is why? Why the reticence to implement current law? Hopefully, Ms. Horn's proposed policy update will move county a little closer to compliance with the law and with common sense sanity. Thank you.
Becky, Becky Hofseth? Becky, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Becky Hofseth from Knox County and I am here as a mother of seven and grandmother to 11, standing in the gap for young parents who are in the beautiful fray of raising children, very few having the time to show up at a 5:00 p.m. school board meeting. We must be mindful that their absence cannot be construed as disinterest and certainly not as approval of the child targeted sexually explicit books sitting on school library shelves. I venture to say that if a survey was done of Knox County parents, it would show that very few have any idea of the extent of the debased content available in our libraries, let alone that their school board has yet to act on removing books, which would be considered by most entirely inappropriate. At the April meeting, the library collection process was likened to weeding a garden. Weeding is an entirely apt way of describing the pressing need to uproot and rid our libraries of invasive and harmful species of books that have been condoned and justified by those who have placed inclusivity over the clear will of the people as evidenced by Tennessee law. Consider, Tennessee was one of the first states to ban transition procedures in minors and the first in the nation just recently to pass a law that penalizes adults who help minors undergo these treatments. We have laws that ban minors from attending drag queen shows, prohibit the availability of obscene materials, and mandate abstinence-based sex education. And yet, we continue to witness the dismissal of these current laws, moral traditions, and even common sense by some of our school board members, educators, and librarians who unabashedly defend the use of taxpayer dollars to provide children with, children and teens with sexually explicit gender dysphoric books such as never before seen in all of history. On its face, it is a brazen and audacious position and unworthy of the trust of the citizens of Knox County. Wide-eyed leaders will plainly see the lie that dares to justify the benefit of these books. There is no comparison to the Judy Blume books that were referred to. Courageous leaders will act accordingly. Know this, you are not a prude, you're not an extremist, a homophobe, a racist, a transphobe. If you think sexually explicit books should not be available to youth, you are a good person who clearly sees the truth. Thank you, Susan Horn, for bringing the proposal that would require any books or materials with sexually explicit imagery to be removed from Knox County Schools. With that proposal comes a Churchill-Chamberlain watershed moment for each of you. Will you continue to appease the crocodile?
Thank, thank you.
Can I just finish? I have two more sentences?
We have a lot of folks and I have to give everyone their, their equal time, I'm sorry.
Okay. God bless him, may he direct your decision.
Stacy Reeves? Stacy, if you'll state your name, county of residence, you'll have three minutes as well.
I've been here before, you know me, don't you? I'm Dr. Stacy Reeves, I live in Knox County. I'm the Chair of West Book Challenge Committee and as such, I've thoroughly dived into the language of both KCS School Board Policy and the Tennessee Code Annotated. One thing that I noticed about the KCS Board Policy I-241 and TCA 4963803, they have the same wording. So each of these states, the LEAs develop a procedure for the board to, quote, "receive and evaluate feedback from a student, a student's parent or legal guardian, or a school employee regarding one or more of the materials in the library collection of the student's or employee's school." I'm an English teacher, I have been for 31 years, and immediately what stuck out to me is the use of the article "the," specifically use of the phrase "the student's school." What this says to me is that a challenge to a book in a library collection is relegated to the school that the student attends, no matter who the challenger is. Further research led me to read Tennessee's House Amendment 0657 that would add a new section to TCA Title 49, Chapter 3, part, excuse me, Chapter 6, Part 3, again stating that LEAs adopt a policy that allow parents or legal guardians to report to the Director of Schools that, quote, "material that is obscene or harmful to minors," as defined in 39-17-901, "is being made available to students through the parent's or legal guardian's student's school's library." West has a challenge to a book in our library. However, the challenger does not have a child who attends West High School. I am by no means a legal expert, but I do know a little bit about how language is used. And it sounds to me like the challenger in our specific situation doesn't have a legal standing for this challenge. I would love some clarity on this going forward so that I can execute the responsibilities of chair to the best of my ability and to the letter of the law. And as to all of the book challenges being made lately, allow me to say this, please. Never in 31 years of teaching, never, not one time has, have I heard an educator promote sexual activity for teenagers. Never. To me, saying a sex scene in a book promotes sex is akin to saying, "you read Kill a Mockingbird and that promotes racism. You read Romeo and Juliet and that promotes teen suicide and teen marriage." We know none of that's true. Because the gentleman who quoted the TCA and the definitions for obscene left out the part, the language that's used, right? The book taken as a whole has literary value. And that's how we look at books, as a whole, not in independent parts. Additionally, the TCA defines a minor as a person who's not reached 18 years old and is not emancipated. So taking books out of high school libraries specifically means depriving some 18-year-old students, legal adults, of information. I just want to teach. I just want to be treated as a professional and I want some clarity and I so appreciate you all providing that for me. And as always, any of you are welcome in my classroom at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance McCold? Lance? If you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes as well.
I'm Lance McCold, Knox County, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the board. I, I don't know how this is going to go, but I do think that it's important for us to recognize what's really going on here. This is all about politics. We are presented this thing by a group that calls itself Moms for Liberty. And as we've seen, most of the people who come here and speak are not moms in our Knox County Schools. And liberty is the last thing they want. In this case in particular, they want to take options away from people. Their objective is to deny people the liberty to choose what their children read, what's in our schools. They want their perspective to dominate over everybody else. That's why they're here, that's what they're doing. And our board members are, are faced with a political challenge because there's a certain minority that believes that, oh, this is terrible and we have to protect the little children and we have to protect the parents, we have to do all this stuff because we are smarter than the people who we are protecting. That's what's really going on here. These are people who are setting themselves above everybody else and saying, "we have the right answer, we have the values, we know what's right for you guys." This is what the real story is here. Now, you know, I've got a simple solution for this, you know? And I don't know whether it's a good one, but it makes sense to me. It's like, so if there's an image in a book that somebody, and I don't know how we decide this, because- this, because this terminology, sexual activity, boy, you know, it could be kissing in the parking lot, some people would see it that way. So we are opening ourselves up to a lot if we choose to adopt this thing. But here's a simple solution: Buy some stickers, and if there's a picture that somebody finds objectionable, paste it on there and leave the whole book, the rest of the book there. Because the librarian or the teacher who brought that book into the school evaluated on the basis of the whole book. Covering up just those words or that picture allows all the good stuff that comes along with the uncomfortable stuff to be available. Throwing out the whole book, you know, is like throwing out a whole person because they broke their leg. It's crazy. Thank you very much.
Sherri Super. Sherri, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes as
Sherri Super, Knox County, Chair of the dreaded Moms for Liberty. I received a reply from Ms. Bike today, from, to an email that I sent to everyone this morning. Quote, "Sherri, I'm going to be honest here, I don't hear about this from many other people or from any parents/families from District 4. Do you not trust our district leadership or our library science department? The short answer is no. I don't trust district leadership or the library science department, as they are clearly aware these materials are available in our school libraries and have done nothing about it. The current library policy is in direct contradiction with the Internet safety policy and the sexual education laws in the state. Both are, both use similar language to the amended Inappropriate Materials Act that becomes effective July 1st. The language is also found in federal obscenity laws for minors. Sumner, Rutherford, Williamson, and Wilson County school boards have all removed inappropriate materials while Knox County fiddles. You may not hear from parents, but Moms for Liberty does. Here are a few comments from a Facebook post about gender queer and fun home. What? Is this real? They arrest people for this crap. Unbelievable. WTF. I don't even know how to put into words how I feel about this. That's disgusting. To think a grown person looks at these and thinks to themselves, "This porno will be perfect for students." I agree with Mr. Triplett's sentiments. It makes me sick to have this conversation. Common sense and morality dictate that images of blowjobs and passages like this one, any kind of penetrating sexual activity involving the anus is typically called anal sex. This can involve penetration with the penis, fingers, or sex toys. Sex toys for anal penetration made of silicone are the best because they are, they can be cleaned and disinfected. Just boil them in hot water for five minutes or run them through the dishwasher. Are we now educating children on how to disinfect butt plugs? Is this where we are? On Monday, some of you did a complete 180 claiming you don't want to do anything that harms students. Prove it and vote for Ms. Horn's policy until a more comprehensive one can be implemented. Thank you."
Sherri Garrett. Sherri, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Sherri Garrett, I live in Knox County. I'm Vice Chair of the dreaded Moms for Liberty. Before you have a policy which states that the change in it is, any material containing images depicting a sex act or sexual activity shall be excluded. I really appreciate Ms. Horn bringing that policy to us this month. However, the new state law that has been passed, the amended state law in Section 4963803 states, for purposes of this section, a material that in whole or in part contains nudity or descriptions or depictions of sexual excitement, sexual conduct, excess violence, or sadomasochistic abuse, as those terms are defined in 3917901, is not appropriate for the age or maturity level of a student in any of the grades kindergarten through 12, and must not be maintained. It doesn't say cannot be maintained, or it shouldn't be maintained, it says must not be maintained. So I think the law is very clear in the legislators that have passed this. And Ms. Horn, I really do appreciate you bringing this, I know you were working on this even before we knew this law had passed. And that's all I have, thank you.
Donna, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Donna Trappasie, and I'm a resident in Knox County. I wanted to take the opportunity this afternoon to recognize the hard work and dedication of so many in this room. We have had hard conversations, tough debates about very real issues in our community that don't always have a simple answer. We don't always see eye to eye or agree, and we have it all, at times, left these meetings frustrated and worn. But we come back. We come back, meeting after meeting, because we all love our kids, and it is our God-given responsibility to protect our children and their childhood. There are far too many that, for selfish reasons, want that childhood to end early. When we have something to celebrate that protects our children, we must share in it together. And today we celebrate, we have been heard, and you have been heard. For months, we have worked together to remove inappropriate materials from our school libraries. KCS, by default, of its email screening software conceded that these materials were indeed inappropriate. This board acknowledged the need to examine and review these materials to remove them. You voted to create committees tasked with that examination. A few weeks ago, the state legislator, legislature passed a bill that Governor Lee signed shortly after. As of July 1st, by law, these inappropriate materials will no longer be in our school libraries, and today we celebrate together. Thank you.
That concludes, that concludes public forum on this topic. We have a motion and a second, and we have discussion. I think Ms. Bike.
Thank you. It's correct today that I did reply all to some emails that I copied the whole board on, and so I feel it's only right that I read these publicly for everyone. We got an email today from Ms. Super that says, and I'm only going to read parts of it to introduce the idea. All, "It has never been my or Moms for Liberty intention to ban books, but to develop a system that is fair and appropriate. As a national organization, I have access to information and policies throughout the state and nation that may prove helpful. This information was provided to me by the Moms for Liberty Wilson County chapter." She goes on to talk about Wilson County. I replied all to that, which has the board, many other district people on it. I said, "Sherri, I'm going to be honest here, I don't hear about this from many other people or from any parents/families from District 4. Do you not trust our district leadership or our library science department? I would also like to point out that we are a different and larger district than Wilson County schools by approximately three times. Wilson County has about 20,000 students, we have about 60,000 students. We are a large school district." That part was not in the email, but to explain that. She replied, "I'm not going to read all of this, but if anyone does want a copy, I did post it online, I'm happy to share it." Catherine, the email was a courtesy, she goes on to explain her side. I then replied to that and said, "Sherri, these parents should be using the systems and channels in place rather than Facebook. Perhaps there would be more effective action. I have done no 180s, perhaps it's your assumptions about me that I have done a 180." She replied to that, that said she had encouraged parents, gada, gada, gada. That was also a reply all. I don't usually get all into this, but we have a system in place. We have gone over and over and over the systems in place. I understand that there is a new law, and I am always here to abide by laws. I also do take offense to the idea that I would be wanting to harm children. I take a great offense to that. I have two children, I mentor children, I mentor little girls in, through mountain biking, I take a huge offense to that. We are representing a public school, all schools, all families in Knox County, and we have to figure out systems, and we have systems in place, that work for all of that. You know what? Families are reaching out about to me, school security, access to food, third and fourth grade retention, and student supports. I hear about those pretty constantly. One time, so far in my almost two years, have I heard about a book. And that book was not any of the books that have been brought up or challenged, and I have the privilege of asking people in the district about it. It was a math studies book that was very sexual in nature, and even the front made math sexy. And it's in our libraries, but no one seems to care about that one. And I asked Ms. Cotney and several other people, so that I could get some clarity, and so that I could help this parent kind of understand that book more. I talked to librarians, I talked to other people in our district. And then that parent, with those explanations, was very happy at the end and let it go. I think parents have the freedom to choose. Parents can choose to have these books not allowed to be checked out by their students. I think that is a freedom that is available to every parent and guardian in Knox County. What makes me sick is that people are insinuating that our teachers and our librarians are grooming children when we know that that is not true. We know who is grooming children, and I would really just love to focus on abiding by the law and actually protecting children. Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett. I would just like to make sure all of our board understands that sex education laws are specific to curriculum, and that is completely separate from library materials. So all of those references to what can and cannot be in the health curriculum and the sex curriculum, that's not part of the library law, okay? In this policy, we have a reference that goes to TCA 4961305 and 1306, but I don't see any reference to TCA 3917901, which is where we should be looking to find the definitions that are referenced in both the current and the new law. There are a lot of words that we could come up with, a lot of phrases, a lot of descriptions that could be considered sexual and inappropriate. Even the word "fiddles" could be considered to be very inappropriate. So our legislature has pointed us to definitions to make sure that we understand exactly what they mean. And I think we absolutely need to take time to add a reference to TCA 3917901, so that our librarians and our teachers can take a look at those and understand exactly what the definitions are. We don't need them to go out and try to determine what the legislature might mean when we have the definitions right there, and they are very, very clear. I mentioned some concerns Monday. I want to reiterate that any time we try to shove something through really quickly, we tend to end up with a problem on our hands. And so I would implore you to use the policy we have in place regarding how to adopt policies. We have a policy policy. It's supposed to go to policy review first, where we can take time to make sure all of these things are in the policy and that it's ready to go before we end up bringing it out and, and having discussions over things that may not be even relevant. My other concern with this, besides, the corrected language is fine, but my other concern is that on July 1st, the law changes. And the law changes in some very specific ways. One thing that it does is says that the, the library collection must be suitable for the age and maturity level of the students who may access the materials. And we know that we have students who are 18, 19, 20, we may have 21-year-old students. The other part of this says that it must be suitable for and consistent with the educational mission of the school. And if we are looking at policy that encompasses all of our schools, then I think it's reasonable to look at the mission for all of our schools, and that includes opportunities that are accessible. And when we are removing books, we are very specifically making those books inaccessible. So if our mission statement is to be accessible, the law says it must be consistent with the mission, and we are removing things to make them inaccessible, it seems that on July 1st, we might have a problem. Thank you.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you. Okay, so there have been a lot of things stated. I'll just point out that in the updated version of Policy I-211 that Mr. Dupler submitted based on the conversation that we had Monday night, the, the language that he, I think, changed it a little bit, if I'm not mistaken, so that it more closely matches the updated code, and moved it so that it's now under criteria for selection, and also at the bottom of that listing referenced that we shall comply with all requirements of that law, so that, so that kind of takes care of a lot of the issue about what we need to explain or not explain. Mr. Dupler, if you want to weigh in on the other, the more, referencing the more specific language, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in on that, but I feel like the changes that you made addressed some of the conversation that we had. And I'll just say too, I feel like, you know, obviously, we've already established that on July 1st, this is not, this will become state law. So this is not going to become a matter of whether a review committee reviews a book and thinks it's okay, or anything of that nature. The law will be relative to the images that we've been discussing, and not to mention the content, the, the written content, but specifically, we're talking about the images here. So, so it will not, just so everybody understands, it's not going to be a review committee, it's, it becomes then part of the, the code, and it's up to the school system to uphold the law. So if we approve this right now, we are basically, and we can approve it tonight, and then we can have policy review at the end of the month, and if we decide we want to make a change or an addition, we can certainly do that and bring it, and then we'll have it on the agenda for second read in July. But, but this, this becomes part of the law. So my feeling is, we've been talking about this, I know I heard, first heard about it in October or November, and I've been hearing from community members in my community for the last probably six weeks, maybe longer, but specifically the last several weeks. And so I feel like if we can approve a change, an update, clarification to our policy now, to me, this is something we ought to do, in my view. So I feel like that we should do it now, and we would have to, we have to do it in July anyway.
Mr. Dupler, you...
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I was just going to expound upon what Ms. Horn was saying, which was, I mean, she and I had spoken before this meeting, you know, and after Monday's meeting, obviously, so that I could make sure that I was trying to produce what, what, what she was asking about. And, you know, her goal was to try and get something clear as far as some language, and that's the language that in the, in the revised I-211 appears on the, on the first page under line 34. So it, so it adds language that was called for on Monday night. It also adds language that, that is very specific in the amended 4963803, and those terms are defined under 3917901. And so that citation was indeed added at the bottom of page two. And then, and then finally, Ms. Horn wanted to, to make sure, again, that, that, that it wasn't just that change, she was trying to make a very clear change, but she also wanted to make sure that, that the board and the administration compl- the board and the administration complied with all the new requirements under 4963803. So, that's why that, that, that additional line was, was, was added on page two. So, I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you. I support Ms. Horn's, this change to the policy, and I feel like it is the right move. There are really two questions here. One is, you know, is this policy something we need, and then do we need to pass it now? Right? Those are the questions we ask. To the first question is an absolutely resounding yes. We do need a policy like this. We have, we've tried since October for a long time to have this discussion, to, to develop some sort of standard by which folks can review books, and, and we have not got anywhere with it and haven't had a lot of support for it. But this one is very clear, very plain, very simple, very well-defined, not, doesn't, not real gray. I mean, it's pretty black and white, and I think it, it sets a clear standard. And I think we need to enforce that standard beyond just being state law. I think it's the right move, whether state law did it or not. It's, it's the right thing to do. I, I feel very strongly that everyone on this board, this should be a unanimous yes vote, is really what it should be. And I know not everybody would agree with that, and you, you don't have to agree with me, but what we're discussing here is whether or not we want to give sexually graphic images and make that available to the students in our schools. And, and there, currently, there's not a, according to Mr. Dupler and Dr. Reiswick and the standards we have set, we don't have a, a clear standard on that. And this sets that clear expectation. You don't have to agree with me. I, I, I come maybe from a different viewpoint than some. I strongly believe, you know, that, that what I'm asking to be done is, is scripturally correct and all of that, but you don't have to agree with that. We also have state law that agrees with that. And to the second question, you know, do we need to do it now? We have, we've been at this so long, and we haven't really got traction anywhere. We finally reached something that everybody's felt like was very clear on Monday night. And what Mr. Dupler will bring, I, I think will create a lot of discussion. There's going to be some gray areas. Mr. Dupler's mentioned that, maybe some things that we're going to have to, some nuances we're going to have to dive into to figure out. This policy that she is bringing is not part of that gray area. It won't be part of that discussion because it's very, very clear. So, we need to pass what is very, very clear now, and that will give Dr. Wilson, Dr. Reiswick, and those folks time to get things organized and implemented for the start of the school year. We can discuss at the end of June, you know, what the law looks like for, in other areas, and that may be some robust discussion. We get something started July, and then August at the second reading, we're already in school, so it's too late. So, I, I feel very strongly that this ought to be a yes vote, and I encourage everyone on this board to vote yes. I'm not sure how you can vote no to this policy, and I encourage you not to pass. I mean, a yes vote, a pass vote is just like saying no, that you don't support this. So, let's vote yes, and we'll get this policy in place. And then some of the more nuanced discussion we need to have, we can have in, at, at the end of June.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to this. As, as you all know, I wasn't here on Monday night. Was vacationing in Clearwater Beach, Florida with my wife. For anybody who's married out there, get away with your spouse at least once a year. No kids. So, it's, it's a good thing, good practice. But I did go back and listen to the meeting and appreciated the opportunity to do that. I'm so glad we have that kind of technology. I can't imagine trying to get, you know, the breadth of that just through reading, reading meeting minutes. Ms. Warren, I appreciate you being responsive to your constituents and to others who have come and spoken before us on this issue. I do agree with Mr. Triplet that I think there's, you know, two things that were really debating, and maybe for me, it's just really, one, it's just about the timing of it. And I know there was a lot of conversation about that on Monday night. I've been on the board now for almost four years, and we have wrestled through a lot of policy in four years. And one of the things I've appreciated about that is we wrestle through policy, and we do that in the context of policy review meetings. I also know that it was pointed out on Monday that currently, our librarians are not on contract. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Is that correct? That our librarians are not currently on contract, correct?
They're, they work teacher contracts, so yes, they are off for the summer.
Yeah, and, and we also know that our kids are not in school at the moment, and I think we all know that the impending date for the law change is July 1st, but we certainly have time to have a more robust conversation about this. I mean, I know Ms. Horn is picking up specifically on the new language around sexual conduct and sexual excitement. We know that the former policy, and even the version that we have tonight, also has other language earlier up in it about explicit sexual content, right? So, there's just more commentary now relative to the law and, and online 34 and 35. But there's also some change around, we have in, in our policy, current policy, in this policy here, graphic violence. The language now is excessive violence. I don't know if maybe that's not being pointed out for a change because we have less agreement about what excessive violence looks like on pages in a book. I don't know. But to me, we, you need to have a robust conversation about this, and, and I'm fine with having a conversation and getting to work and doing a policy and voting on it. I don't think anybody necessarily has any interest in continuing to extend it. We do know that the law is changing. And I heard a lot of comments on Monday night that this sends a clear statement. It's interesting because we used a lot of that same language, some of us did the meeting before, about the law that passed related to possibility allowing teachers to come armed in schools, and some of us wanted to make a clear statement on that, and didn't feel like we got it just by adding the word "only." And the reason I bring that up is not to put that in anybody's face, but what I'm saying is we argued about one word because we wanted to make a clear statement, and I'm guessing that we need to argue about some more words on this. And I think it's important for us to not rob ourselves of that conversation. And I think the statement that will be made is to Moms for Liberty and others who have been advocating for this, and it's your right to advocate for it. And I think you will send a clear statement, hey, we heard you and we did something. But I don't think us rushing it to make a statement is the right move. I think we need to actually take the time and, and discuss it because there's a lot of things that have changed in the law. And I think we need to try to get it right. And again, my comments are not about the law and whether or not it's good or bad or indifferent. I mean, like Ms. Mike stated, we've all committed to follow state law. And a lot of our conversations over the four years that I've been on the board, relative to policies, updating policy regarding to law. So, to me, this is a shift in practice for us. I actually don't remember a time where we've been given a suggested change to a policy without discussing it ahead of a meeting and then being asked to pass it on first reading. And again, I do think your point in doing that is to send a very specific statement. I'm just saying that I don't know that it's our role to send statements that are not clearly articulated. And I know that we, even between Monday night and tonight, we've already made some changes. I mean, what you proposed has already been shifted in the, in, in the course of a 30-minute conversation on Monday night. And to me, if, if that's true, if it already probably wasn't what it exactly needed to be, and it never is, right? Like, it's, it can always be better. I don't know why we wouldn't give ourselves to discuss that more in June as a board focused just on that issue. So, I will be passing it. It's not because I want kids to see pornographic materials. So, you know, you saying that, like, my pass vote means that is not appropriate, I don't think. My pass vote means I think we need to take the time as a board and discuss a policy at length and give it the credit that it's due, because as we all know, the law has changed. So.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you. I appreciate that Mr. Watson was so diplomatic in talking about what his vote means. I will probably be less so. If we are following Robert's rules, I believe it is pretty clear that attacking motivations of other board members is inappropriate. And I don't appreciate having anyone define for me what my vote means. If you want to know what my vote means, you get to ask me, you don't get to tell me. And I have already said that I disagree with the premise of even voting for this because we have a policy that we are violating by doing so. We have a policy that says that our changes will go in policy review before coming to the board. It then says that we will pass on to readings. There is no emergency situation right now that says that we must do this quickly or expediently or anything else. And Dr. Wilson told us on Monday that librarians are off contract right now. So, really, all we're doing is getting them to pay attention to something while they're off contract, and knowing teachers as I know teachers, they're probably going to try to go to school and start doing something about it. That's not appropriate. We should be following our policies when we're making policies, if there's no inherent reason that we shouldn't. My question is, when this was brought to us, we had I-211 and I-212, but I-212 we're now not looking at. And that's a bit confusing because if we needed to add the language to I-211, I would think we would need to add language to I-212 because the law did not remove the reconsideration of instructional materials in textbooks. So, you know, if we are, if we are looking at adding this language in one of these policies, it seems that we are going to have these two policies that are no longer aligned. So, that is also a concern. And just one more reason why we should take the appropriate time that is in our policies. Thank you.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you. If you'll notice in my, in my motion, I just moved to, up to pass policy I-211, and I, I was not recommending that we pass policy 212. I think if you look at line 13 on policy 212, it references directly policy I-211, so I really don't think we need it in both places. I don't think the language needs to be there because it, it basically references 211, which lists a listing of criteria. So, I think that it doesn't need to change because it already references 211.
Is that it, Ms. Horn?
Yes, and I'll, I'll just say, since I have the floor again, thank you, that, you know, we've, we've been talking about books since, since April, or since October, and we need some traction on this. We need to get moving on it. We didn't have a policy review meeting in May. I think the meeting was canceled, or the la, I think, I think it was in May that we were supposed to have one. So, this is an important issue. I don't think that this is an issue that I would prefer that we wait for state law to dictate that we make the change. I think that we should make a change like this just because it's the right thing to do. And so, that's why I would prefer that we go ahead and move on this now. Thank you.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I think because it's been referenced several times, I just wanted to read a minute from the policy itself. So, policy B-200, policy development adoption, I mean, I think it's, I think Ms. Horn is correct that if, if this policy is voted through, I think, I mean, we are absolutely going against our policy. So, starting on line eight on policy B-200, I'm not going to read it all, but the important section relative to the conversation here, says either the administration or a board member may propose policies or policy amendments. Ms. Horn is absolutely doing that and within, within this policy to do that. All proposed policy or policy amendments, it does say all, shall first be brought to the director of schools or the director of schools designate for addition to the policy review process. Our policy review process is having a policy review meeting. Following the review process, then proposed policies or policy amendments shall be submitted to the board for consideration as a part of the agenda. So, I just want to make it known that if we don't do that, we are circumventing our policy related to it. And, you know, I, I know that there's reasons at times to not follow your policy. I just think it's interesting that when we're proposing a shift to a policy, we're not following the policy related to that, when that's been our practice. I don't know. So, yeah.
Any further discussion? Is there a second? So, now we vote on the, all in favor of call for the questions, say aye. All right, you want to do a roll call vote on the motion on the floor.
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
No.
And this is for call for the question. Yes, ma'am.
We just, we just voted all in favor, say aye.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. We voted all in favor, say aye.
I'm so sorry.
Everybody agreed to go for the vote. I apologize, I didn't make that clear.
That's okay.
So, this is related to Ms. Horn's motion on this policy.
So, this is a motion on the updated policy. Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Still down.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Mike?
No.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's four yes votes, two no votes, and two passes. Dr. Butler, did you want to change your pass vote? Mr. Watson?
No.
Motion fails.
Item 8A, approved consolidated grant application and receipt of funds from the Tennessee Department of Education for fiscal year 2025, federal Title 1A, Title 1C, Title 1D, Title 1N, Title 2A, Title 3, and Title 4 in the amount of $18,926,456.46.
Motion by Mr. Butler, second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Item 8B, approved Tennessee Department of Education fiscal year 2024 summer learning camps grant in the amount of $7,570,758.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Mike. Any discussion? Ms. Christie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I don't have any discussion on that, that I'm hearing, I'm having a hard time hearing, I'm hearing noise.
I think some folks stepped out, so I think we're, we're good. We'll ask folks if they'll be quiet while we do this. Any discussion on item 8B? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8C, approved Tennessee Department of Education fiscal year 2024 turnaround action grant for Austin East Magnet High School, Vine Middle School, Northwest Middle School, Longdale Elementary School, Sarah Moore Green Elementary School, and Maynard Elementary School in the amount of $1,089,149.
Motion by Mr. Butler, second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approved Tennessee Department of Education fiscal year 2025 Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant in the amount of $943,977.75.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approved TBA Energy Ride Learning Environment Grants in the total amount of $30,000 for Dogwood Elementary School, Halls Elementary School, and Northwest, North Shore Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8F, approved United Cleanup Oak Ridge LLC STEM education mini-grants in the total amount of $3,250 for Amherst Elementary School, Carren's High School, and Mill Creek Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. Butler, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approved construction contract with Skilled Services Quality Construction LLC for innovative school models projects at Austin East Magnet High School, Carter High School, Carter Middle School, Farragut High School, Gibbs High School, Gibbs Middle School, Gresham Middle School, Halls High School, Holston Middle School, South Hill High School, South Hill Middle School, West Valley Middle School, and Will Springs Middle School at a cost of $3,110,000 using innovative school models grant funds.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approved contracts with DPM Enterprises Incorporated doing business as DPM Surface Care, Surface Master Contract Cleaning Solutions, and Zion Imperial Solutions Incorporated for provision of carpet and floor-tock cleaning services up to $500,000 annually for the term of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Mr. Butler, second, who was that? Second by Mr. Wright. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approved contract with HSC Building Automation and Controls for provision of energy and water efficiency goods and services for Cedar Bluff Middle School as set forth in TIPS inter-local purchasing system cooperative number 2310020, up to $500,000 commencing on July 1, 2024.
Motion by Mr. Watson, second by Mr. Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approved contract with HSC Building Automation and Controls for provision of energy and water efficiency goods and services for Central High School and Green Magnet Academy as set forth in TIPS inter-local purchasing system cooperative.
as set forth in TIPS interlocal purchasing system cooperative number 23100202, up to $1,075,000 commencing on July 1, 2024.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Mr. Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10A, approved fiscal year 2025 fund balance designations in the amount of $2,719,102.
Motion by Mr. Butler, second by Ms. Horn. We do have one public speaker, public forum speaker on this topic, Michelle Meehan. Is Michelle, here, there she is. No, she's not. Michelle? Nobody moving? Is anybody in the community room that you know of? I apologize for the delay, just want to make sure she's here or not, give her opportunity to speak. Okay. Very good. Any discussion? Looks like, Ms. Bike?
Yeah, I just have a couple of follow-up questions to the questions that I asked on Monday about that $430,000 that's kind of wrapped into this. I really appreciate all the clarification, but I think I need a little bit more clarification. Is there any sort of RFP that's related to this chunk of money? What is, can you explain that process a little bit? I'm sorry, and thank you.
Dr. Brown, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet, Ms. Bike. Yes, if you will notice, one of the line items in, in this fiscal note is for $375,000. Again, that, that is just a, that's an estimate. We have no idea what it will cost. We, we did put the item out for RFP. I've been informed by federal programs and procurement that we have had a respondent, and so I'm waiting for procurement. Typically, we would need three respondents and then we'd put together a committee and we'd review those and then we would bring a recommendation to the board. So I think at this point in time, we either have to accept the one respondent that we have had, and I don't have the details on that yet. Ms. Martin has that, and she's worked with procurement. And then we would bring that recommendation to you all.
Would, when did that open for, for acceptance?
The RFP?
Mm-hmm.
So it published on April 8th and closed on May 8th.
Okay. So then, at this point, no one else could go into it.
That is correct. And if we chose not to accept this one, it's my understanding that we would have to repost in the next window, I believe, is July 1st.
Okay. Is this, forgive me for not knowing more, is this something we've put out in RFP before for?
Not that I'm aware, no.
Is, and this one is directly related to what the task force recommendations were?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we were looking at a third-party vendor to do a full analysis of the special education department. I think the task force specifically pointed out inclusion, and we are aware that inclusion is one piece of special education, but our intent, just like we did with literacy, just like we did with 865 academies, just like we did with, I'm trying to think, there was another one, oh, the Region 5 Plan. We want to get somebody to, to take a holistic approach and look at our entire special ed department, point out, you know, the, the pluses and the minuses, and then help us identify areas where we can improve and then build a three-to-five-year strategic plan from that.
Would this include, because I know sometimes there's other areas, is this, for special education, would this just be for the area of students that have IEPs? Would it also be 504s and then just IEPs?
Yes, 504 is not covered under IDEA.
So would this look at families' process of getting an IEP? Or would it just look at how we're serving the students for inclusion that already have an IEP?
So I would say that, that's, that's an interesting question. I, I, I would say that part of the process for IDEA is, is a process called Child Find, which is how we identify students. And so that would be a component of IDEA, and that would also be subject to the analysis. So yes, making sure that we have clear pathways. And I will say also, one of the other recommendations, one of the things that we most recently did was update the website, and we're doing a complete, I know Ms. Lautner's department or division is doing a complete overhaul of the KCS website, but we've gone ahead and tried to launch some things on the special ed page to make sure that we are making that process easier and, and trying to make it as, as, as quick and as easy as possible for our parents.
Okay. Yeah, it would just be one of my big concerns with that process, that we really look at how, how we are helping families get to the point of an IEP if that's what the student needs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you. Did procurement give you any indication of maybe reasons why there were so few? Is it because there are few who do it or anything like that?
Ms. Owen, I have not had a conversation with procurement, so I, I don't, I, I was a little disappointed myself, I really thought, and they actually reached out to several people who do this kind of work, and we did not receive responses from some of them. So I don't know if it's, it's the size of our district or, you know, I, again, I, this is my first round with procurement and an RFP, so I don't have any experience, but I was a little disappointed that one was all we got.
I, I will say that they are very thorough in how they put those out, so they, they can usually, they usually have some feedback about the whys, so they might be.
Yeah, I will definitely ask those questions when, when I do get the opportunity to sit down, but Ms. Martin is our point of contact for that, so I'm kind of waiting for her to give me some direction on where we go next.
If you ever want to do a super nerdy thing, you can go down there and look at a whole stack of them.
I'll, I'll do that in my spare time.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B, approved schematic design for the new Farragut Area Elementary School by McCarty-Hall Sappel McCarty Incorporated.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to public forum. Jennifer Rose. Is Jennifer here? I do not see Jennifer. William Rose. Oh, Jennifer's coming. There, thank you. Ms. Coney. Sorry about rushing you over here, Jennifer.
You're fine, sorry, we were trying to get over here.
Jennifer, you'll state your name, county residence, she'll have three minutes.
Jennifer Rose, Knox County. Good evening, everyone. During Monday night's work session, we discussed two major concerns, new salaries and the book ban. Ms. Horn emphasized the importance of the book ban, stating that taxpayer money funds these books and wants to ensure KCS complies with Tennessee state law. It's ironic that we focus on taxpayer money spent on books and state law compliance, yet KCS seems indifferent to significant taxpayer funds spent on lawsuits due to multiple federal law violations, including ADA, IDEA, and FAP. I'm not here to debate the book issue, but to highlight that KCS selectively enforces laws and prioritizes taxpayer money only when it aligns with their interest. For instance, on Tuesday morning, the administration released a new administrative procedure for the J-359 private practitioner policy. The health services supervisor promptly sent this to all private practitioners. This procedure is setting KCS up for more lawsuits and more taxpayer money wasted. It grants the health service supervisor and school principals greater control over approving or denying medically necessary services ordered by a child's doctor. The procedure even states that principals can override the J-359 policy. Over a year ago, I first asked a crucial, crucial question that remains unanswered. Why does anyone within the KCS administration, down to the school level, have the authority to decide whether a child's doctor's medical prescription is allowed? For example, parents have to monitor their child's glucose levels from home or work, and if the child needs insulin, they must leave their location to administer it at school. This is because KCS administration and the health services supervisor believe that they know more than a child's medical doctor. During one of the board discussions last year, Ms. Owen stated that she didn't think anyone within KCS, including herself, should make medical decisions about a child that override a doctor's orders. All of you agreed. So why is this still happening? Why does KCS continue to allow it and create even more procedures that enable it? Why are we more concerned with taxpayer dollars spent on books than the amount spent on lawsuits due to such procedures and medical neglect? If someone were to request documents showing the amount KCS spends on books versus lawsuits, I bet the lawsuit expenses would be higher. What will it take for KCS to wake up and make changes? I hope it doesn't take a child being seriously hurt, injured, or worse, dying due to KCS and neglect and the attitude that health service supervisor, administration, and others know more than medical professionals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
William Rose? William, if you'll state your name for us and your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
William, Knox County. I actually have something. With my time being in Beaumont, I can tell something that all the teachers have nothing to do there. And I can say, I can say that, that they do need, they get, to do something different with their lives because I have shown and what I have seen as a kid from Beaumont, I really have seen some things after seeing teachers yelling at children and mostly even, but also I was being bullied, nothing. But I do prefer Knox County schools that do get something to happen with them, and I actually hope Knox County will get to be able to make sure that they have better schools, especially they do what they know. Especially from, especially from me and from Beaumont, I will, I can really say that I have, that I have seen and, and heard some things that, that I don't like from teachers and also know that Knox County, I bel, I believed more, I believed a lot more could, I believed a lot more better in them, in Knox County schools, especially Beaumont, because I believe, because I believe that they could have, that they could make sure that they had, that the kids really there had a fun time and be able to actually, so the teachers can do what they say, especially send to me, that they're going to make the school fun. It did not look fun, it did not even sound fun, be, to me, that I'm, that the reason is that I believe Knox County has the time to be able to at least change the teachers or at least give their teachers more training because I have shown and seen, mostly not shown, but I've seen and heard some things that I do not like, some things that I wish could possibly go away. And, and everything has went better since I have got homeschooled. Thank you. It's been, it's been a pleasure to speak to you.
Thank you, William. Jessica Turnbill? Jessica, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes. We'll give you time to get the podium back up.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Jessica Turnbill, and I live in Knox County. Thank you for allowing me to speak here in front of you tonight. I come to you as one of the many nurses in Knox County schools. We are concerned about the removal of our experience from our pay steps. Many of us had number of years' experience prior to coming into Knox County schools. When we were hired, we were credited for up to five years of the experience, just as teachers are. With the new pay system, these are being taken away from us. We bring our critical thinking skills, multitasking, and initiative with us. We are responsible for all students and staff in Knox County schools, but the loss of the credit makes us feel devalued. My personal clinic averages around 50 kids a day and, and more during the cold and flu season. There have been multiple injuries, all of which have avoided ambulances because of my knowledge in the medical field and knowing the difference between an emergency and a visit to the ER. There are other situations in schools where quick response of an ambulance or even CPR has helped to save students' lives, and yet, when it comes to raises, we are valued less than teachers. Another concern we have is that someone with the same degree as several of us, a bachelor's degree in nursing, can teach a health science class and receive all the benefits of a teacher, but the rest of us, being school nurses in Knox County, do not get those benefits. We are certified by the state, we have a license to upkeep, and we are required to accumulate in-service hours just as teachers are. We reduce the liability of staff members by making sure medications are dosed and received properly. Medical professionals have to calculate insulin dosages for diabetic students. Several times this year, misprints on food items in the cafeteria could have led to a lethal dose of insulin being administered had the school nurse not caught the errors. We are responsible for tube feedings, catheterizations, trach suctioning and changes, along with multiple other duties. We have no guaranteed lunchtime and are often called off lunch to take care of staff or students. We have done so for years because we are nurses and we care. Additionally, we cover after-school dances, field trips, community experiences, and other special events that require nurses, and if these, if nurses weren't here, these could not happen. As administrators, educators, parents, and nurses, we work hard to teach our kids to compromise, come up with solutions, and be fair. We feel we were not offered this opportunity. Having polled our nurses, I, it appears that a majority of us would receive less than a 2% raise under the new pay scale. We are only asking that the board take up this issue concerning the decrease of the steps and look further into the situation. We are asking that we be valued as employees of Knox County schools and as healthcare professionals. Thank you again.
Alexis Rhodes? Alexis Rhodes? If you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
William is much better at this than I am. Okay, Alexis Rhodes, Knox County. My son does not struggle with autism. He is quite good at it. One could argue that he is good at it naturally, but my husband and I know that he is often able to excel in his strengths and is learning to cope with his discomforts because of the services and treatments that we have been fortunate enough to provide for him, the very supports that Knox County School had dragged their feet for months to allow him access to. One of his strengths is a common autistic stereotype of being good with numbers. To take a page from his book, I have gathered some numbers for you. At the public policy review meeting in March, KCS confirmed that there were currently 42 students receiving ABA services within Knox County schools. At that time, KCS was also knowingly restricting access to some of those students and also publicly stated that they were doing so with the knowledge that those practices were not in any violation of any law or school policy. Back to the numbers, though, at least nine out of those 42 students were impacted by this restriction. That's 21%. And to be exact, these students were denied access to services for 60 school days, which is exactly one-third of the school year. What's worse, these numbers were impacted due to what KCS claimed was one parent's concern, one parent of one student. One student makes up .0016% of the 60,000-plus students within KCS, making that one parent .0008% of potential parents of KCS students. So to summarize, KCS made the active choice to not meet the needs of 21% of students for 33% of the school year to make .0008% of parents comfortable. Now, I'm no mathematician, but those numbers seem wildly disproportionate to me. At that March meeting, the board made one simple request, revise admin procedure to allow for remote observations. They made a clear, simple plan to do so. It's now June, and that procedure was just approved by the superintendent. What took so long? Is it because KCS took the opportunity to make unrequested revisions that further restrict these medical treatments? These revisions are poorly written- These revisions are poorly written, and the only thing that clearly outlines is the lack of knowledge KCS has regarding private practitioner services and the combative relationship they intend to have with private practitioners and families. I ask that the KCS staff and superintendent reexamine this procedure over the summer and actually collaborate with appropriate stakeholders, this also means therapists, RBTs, BCBA's, and parents, to develop an educated, clear procedure that prioritizes the students' needs and not .0008% of parents. I also ask that you begin to respect the time of your students as their medical needs require this time around. Thanks.
Allison? Allison Pasternak? If you will state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Allison Pasternak, Knox County. Good evening. It's been almost a year since I last spoke in front of the board. Last July, I stood in front of you to express my gratitude for the unanimous passing of the private practitioner policy. An entire school year has passed since then, and I want to let you know the impact that policy has had on my son. Last August, my son Alex began his eighth-grade year at Farragut Middle School. Prior to that, Alex's ABA provider and I submitted all required documentation on the KCS portal, and we were granted approval for Alex to receive ABA services during the school day. For the first time in over three years, Alex was able to attend school five days a week while also receiving the ABA therapy recommended by his physicians. For the first time in three years, Alex was able to be included in the general education setting for the entire day, apart from one hour during which he received pull-out services for math. The administration and staff at Farragut Middle School worked in collaboration with Alex's therapist to make sure all parties were able to do their jobs, follow their procedures, and most of all, make sure Alex had the most successful eighth-grade year possible. There was a learning curve along the way, but the school administration was communicative and professional whenever a concern arose. The administration, teachers, and staff were willing to collaborate as professionals for a common purpose, my son. I believe this is what was intended by the implementation of the private practitioner policy. At this point, I would love to say thank you and good night. Unfortunately, nothing is that simple. As grateful as I am for my experience last year, I am also disheartened to hear that not all Knox County students had an experience like Alex. It is understandable that issues will arise when a policy is newly implemented, and rarely is it possible to foresee potential shortcomings and pitfalls of a policy until it is put into place. I was not surprised to see that an administrative procedure had been written to accompany this policy after it had been in effect for a full school year. I was hopeful this would provide some county-wide guidelines that would result in a more consistent experience for private practitioners and the students who are benefiting from their services. Unfortunately, the administrative procedure recently signed by Dr. Reiswick gives an enormous amount of discretion to the principal. While that worked out just fine in my case, that wasn't the case for other Knox County students. I would like to ask that a written, that written and transparent guidelines be made countywide for both parties to follow, thus removing the ability of a principal to interfere with or even deny services that they may not fully understand. Written, transparent guidelines will go a long way toward minimizing the contentious dynamic some parents and providers have felt this year from their KCS administrators. Alex will be going to high school in August, and I can only hope that his experience there will be the same as he had in middle school, but with different administrators, I can't be sure. Please help create consistency across Knox County so that every student can have the type of school experience Alex had last year. Thank you.
Tara Wilson? If you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody who is on the dais, and I want to thank you all for your service to the youth in Knox County. My name is Tiara Lady Wilson, and I stand before you as a concerned constituent in this county, but more importantly, a black mother to two beautiful, brilliant, and bold black children of Austin East Magnet High School, who have an IEP and 504 plan and who love their black community that seems to be underserved by Knox County schools. I am here to speak on the public education system that fails black parents by number one, discrediting our valid concerns of mistreatment and abuse of power by white administration and staff. We are made with met-up rules and policies that protects Knox County school employees instead of our children, and those in charge then, number two, dismiss our words with no merit, as if they have no merit, and our desire for our black children to be treated with decency, and we as parents to be respected. And if we dare to stand on business, then it becomes a mission to demonize those of us who refuse for KCS to sweep unresolved problems under the rug. This strategy has been pulled out by play with undisclosed civility codes against passionate parents in order to, number four, destroy our characters, giving away erroneous causes not to address the issues that were blatantly ignored when we were first dismissed. Today, I want to stand and list the names of those on public record who refused to allow me to state my claims when it came to accommodations for my children and their failure for me. Sylvia Froth, Seth Smith, Jennifer Sutherland, Dr. Charlene Lewis, Tommy Watson of Career Magnet, Jill Black, Salie Reynolds, and Cory Lanthar. I'm here today because these people have failed to follow the policies that Knox County has in place. I've made calls, I have made emails, and I love policy and procedure, and that is the only reason why I stand before you all today, because you all have failed to do that, not you all, but the people who you all oversee. So I'm here today because I don't want to have to come back here every month and outline what these individuals did on public record. All I would ask is that the people who are in place, the people who are in charge, would actually follow your policies and respect parents who have issues and concern versus sweeping our issues as if they don't mean anything under the rug. Thank you.
Sylvia Woods? Sylvia, if you will state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Sylvia Woods. I raised, born, and live in Knox County. I was elected Knox County PTA president in 1978 and '80, so I've been around a while. I've been active with the PTA Clothing Center all that time. I have been president several times, I've been treasurer, secretary, I've been a volunteer, and I've always been a donor. Yes, that's over 46 years, over half my life. I am very active in the community, and I consider myself an activist. During the years I was active with the PTA Council, I went seven years to school board meetings and never missed a one. I was at old Knoxville High School the night it caught fire when the school board was having a meeting, and I sat through one whole summer of negotiations when the teachers started first negotiations. So I've been involved with the school system and the Clothing Center for a long time. But I want to talk to you about the PTA Clothing Center and what's happening to it. What the devil are you all doing to our Clothing Center? We've been in business since 1935, helping Knox County schools and helping the students, and we've, I can remember us being moved four times during my 46 years. We were happy at the Sears Building. I don't see any for sale signs outside. I know it's been talked about, but we were told we were moving, everything was packed up and moved away, and we're not happy about it. The administration staff has decided they don't want to make, they want to make the decisions on how to run our organization, that is, the PTA has successfully run since 1935. Our mission is to make sure students have clothes that look like everybody else's, and we all know that a happy child is easier to teach. It is more open to learning. Children unable to attend school because of their clothing means a child is missing out on what you all do. Educate, prepare children to grow and survive and succeed. The PTA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We file 990 forms with IRS, and we get United Way Grants that helps pay for the clothes. You manage, we manage the clothes, and you all have provided the staff since the merger in 1987. You've provided us two and a half people almost all that time. Your staff, and maybe you, are responsible for packing everything up that we own and moving it to Cedar Bluff, a long way from Center City. It is not conducive to parents, social workers that have to come by, or funders, and we see no reason why moving us. Like I said, is there a sold building out, the building sold for, we didn't see it. Plus, school staff has decided how we are to operate. We are told how we must operate while we serve the students of Knox County schools, and that has always been our focus.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, gosh, my time...
I'm so sorry. Everybody gets three minutes, I apologize.
You'll hear from me again, or somebody will.
And you are welcome back, absolutely. And with that, meeting is adjourned.